All right, it's 5:30. Time to call the meeting to order. The meeting tonight will be, and the only topic we will consider tonight will be considering going from three commission to five commission on the city commission. And if you want to address the commission, I'm going to ask that you fill out a little form. It just identifies for record-keeping as to who was willing to come up and speak at the podium and gives us some order. So I've got a couple so far. Anybody else that's still interested? If you'd like to fill out a form? Anyone else that would like to speak? If you would like to fill out a form, take that time to do it now before we get into the gist of this. There will be some ground rules that we will set. That'll give us some guideline to follow so we're all on the same page. Normally, we limit comments to three-minute. Three-minute. And that way, we can keep track of time without going over. Sometimes, there's a lot of people that show up. And when you have multiple people wanting to speak, you know, your time can go pretty fast. So anyway, gentlemen, anything else you would like to add? Either one?
No.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Come on up. Okay. Thank you, David. Get off. I don't want this ringing. Okay. We've got four altogether. All right. Any other comments you gentlemen want to make?
No.
Okay. We'll start with a request to address the city commission in the order that they were turned in. This was number one would be Dean Hayes. Dean, would you approach the podium?
Thank you. My name is Dean Hayes. I live at 2625 Rolling Green Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on the issue of the number of city commissioners. What most of us want from city government is simply for it to work, maybe even work well. When this question of the number of city commissioners came up, one of the first questions I asked was, what is not working? What about the commission of three members would be solved by a commission of five members? It seems that three commissioners can be cumbersome and slow. Progress is, after all, limited to very brief and very busy formal meetings where there is no way to form a committee of commissioners to investigate or research an issue. Also, you must either work alone or work as the whole commission. So the effort to flesh out thoughts and opinions before presenting in public is solitary work, and no real peer is available to serve as a sounding board, as a critic, or as a critic. These situations might be solved by a five-member commission. Still, some voters lack trust in their elected officials and fear committees or meetings without the Open Meetings Act coverage will not be in their best interest. They fear shady deals might be made and, once exposed, would further erode the trust in government. So what is not working? Is the problem a lack of opportunity? Well, five slots might give more opportunities to people, and therefore, people would be able to, more people would be able to be elected, and therefore, maybe more people would seek the office of commissioner. That might be good. But some voters lack the trust of the quality of the pool of candidates that might be generated by that, and fear quality, poorer quality, or otherwise substandard pool of candidates might be the result, and, once in office, they would be unproductive. Well, with either five or three commissioners, it's ultimately critical that we get good commissioners and good candidates for commission. And my point tonight is, whether we have three or five commissioners, I believe it's in the community's best interest to stay with an at-large election for city commission. Dividing the city into wards or districts to select its commissioners simply creates artificial barriers to entry for candidates and thus dilutes the pool of potential candidates for office. Potential candidates are already not running because the job is perceived as thankless and difficult. We don't need these barriers to entry. So by dividing the city, it just creates barriers that we need to break down. Let's stay with an at-large election for city commissioners. Please consider these comments as you discuss your action on this matter this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay. Next on the agenda, Richard Fogle. Would you please come to the podium? And when you're ready, we'll start your time.
Okay. I'm not a very good speaker, but my comments will be short and directed to the point. I live at 1217 North Fourth Street here in Independence. I have for the last 28 years. I've been a homeowner. I own my own home, and I've retired here by working within the city. And anyhow, I've found that, like I say, I've lived in Independence for almost over 50 years. And during that time, I've seen a lot of changes in the city government, along with the different phases of city government. But back when Independence was young, you might say younger than what it is now, back in the '50s, '60s, and '70s, and even '80s, Independence could do pretty well with three members on a commission. But as time went on, Independence government got more complex and, you might say, more involved in different aspects of this government. So therefore, in order to carry out the different aspects of what city government and the commissioners should do, I think in order to function properly and to be thorough about it, you need to have more than three members. Because if something was to happen, and this is something that you can always say, what if? But what if one person was out of town, and then something happened where a major thing had to happen? Even though one person's out of town, might communicate by phone, this person might be needed here in town to act as a representative of the city. So therefore, I think, in my opinion, that the city would best be served and be more diversified if we had a five-member as opposed to a three-member. And I think we would have better results looking towards the end as compared to what we do now. Thank you.
All right. Richard, thank you very much for your comments. All right. Next on the list, Bob Pierce. Bob, would you please address the podium?
And when you're ready, we'll start the clock. Well, I was just looking at this pictures on the wall. I was here before all of those were and some of these. So I have been, and most of you don't even know me now, but I've been damned active in city government and county government for 50 years, up until the last five, 10 years. I have seen three commissioners get along well together. I've seen them two gang up on one, and the one could get nothing done. And one of your commissioners has been subject to that here. I'm not going to name names, but he was the outsider, and he didn't get much done, but he persevered. I personally believe that diversity is good. I think if you get a wide variety of candidates running, and let me ask a question, because this gentleman, all of these will be elected by the majority, right? Okay. So that's not a problem. But it gives you more people, and you're not going to have two ganging up on one anymore. And you get a wider variety of ideas. So I'm for a five-member commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Number four on the list, Jim Kelly. Jim, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. Appreciate the chance to be here, and I'll be short. Having served on a three-member commission for six years, having served on a seven-member school board for eight years, and now in a 125-member chamber for nine years, the numbers, I don't think, make a lot of difference. I had three members of the commission went well, the school board went well, and so I think that your five is not an objection to me. I would echo one of the previous speakers that, at large, I feel would be a very big mistake. Most cities with a city manager in our size range, I believe, utilize five commissioners elected at large. The ward-type system, in my feeling, would say, one, it would generate the possibility of little fiefdoms with emphasis on a certain area of the city and not the city as a whole. And also, if an excellent commissioner, one of you three, moved, were in the five, and moved to another location in town outside of the ward, you'd be no longer a commissioner. So you'd have to reelect. So I think the five is fine. At-large would be a huge mistake. And I think from visiting with others across the state, the ward, I mean, the ward would be a big mistake. Across the state, the feeling is that the at-large is what gives the best representation and the best chance for success for the city. So the five is fine, and I would suggest, in my feeling, that the at-large five would be the way to go. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Okay. Anyone else? There were a couple of people that come in after the meeting had already started. I'll give them an opportunity if they'd like to fill out a request to address the city commission. Any takers? Okay. Thank you for your comments. Gentlemen?
Where to?
Where to? Yeah. That's a good question.
I think tonight is good to start the conversation. It's something we need input, and we want input from the community to see what direction we should go. You know, there's a lot of possibilities. You look at, the majority of the cities in Kansas currently operate with a mayor, council, form of government, and either an administrator or a city manager. But when you go to that, you're looking up to seven members, from five to seven. And in that case, most of the Class 1 and Class 2 cities do look at wards for four wards and then three at-large. So it's a combination of at-large and at districts. So you know, at this point, there's a lot of things to consider as we look at expanding instead of just jumping. There's a lot of information to take in and see what we should do for the city. And your input is really beneficial in giving us ideas, how you see the government, what you've seen in the past living here, and what direction we should go in the future.
All right. Thank you, Leonard. Gary?
You know me, I'm always happy to talk. I'm not sure you want to hear me talk, but I have been on another city commission that had five members and then three members here. And as was already said by several speakers, there are some, I think, some real advantages to the five-person commission. You know, when we have a business meeting, we try to get our business done. We try to get through our business as quick as we can. And you know, I would love to understand more about ADA, as one example. Leonard's an expert, and he's spent maybe his entire career working with ADA projects. And I would love to go have lunch with Leonard and say, let's talk about ADA and, you know, help me understand it better. And same with other topics. And when I was on city commission in Baldwin City, we could do that kind of thing, and I found it very, very helpful. And now, as one of the speakers said, it's, you know, your preparation for the meeting is, you know, a one-person preparation. You can't really get together and discuss with other commissioners, you know, questions that I might ask you in private that I wouldn't ask you in public. And I get that some people say, well, wait a minute, that's not open government. But the fact is, we can't, you know, we can't have the time for the conversations we need to have in some cases in public. I'm not going to ask Leonard for an hour-long explanation on ADA with 50 people sitting in the audience. So I just found that it was just much, much easier on a five-person commission than a three-person commission. I feel this is kind of handcuffed, almost. And I agree with several of the speakers that said, I would not want the ward system personally, because, you know, if we went to five people and we had five districts, then you've got to get 10 candidates to have competition. And then if you don't have anybody run in one part of the city, suddenly, you're back to four commissioners or three, because nobody chose to run, even though in one district, you might have three that want to run. So I would definitely support a five-person commission if we go with the at-large system. I don't think I would support a five-person commission with the wards.
All right, Gary. Thank you for your input.
Sure. Thank you.
As being the newest member on here, part of the reason for us going with work sessions on the third Wednesday of the month would give us gentlemen here the ability to sit. We could talk about items that we wanted to put on the agenda. We could sit, and we could bounce ideas. There's no, of course, decision-making process at any of these meetings. It's a work session, and that's what it's intended to be. But we had an opportunity to hear Gary's intake on an issue or issues, Leonard's intake on an issue or issues, and my intake. So we had a better understanding of what we were thinking, what some of our ideas were, and we had a chance to take that in and use that as we are moving forward. In the past, we've had some issues that were brought up, that the commissioners didn't really have the time to sit down and really look at those particular issues. Sometimes, they were presented in a manner to where, you know, the pressure was for you to act on this issue before we leave the building tonight. And sitting in where you're sitting at, I've seen that happen, where they were pressured to make decisions that probably, if they had to go back and redo it, they may be asked to either table it or set up another meeting to try to hash some of this out. So that was the purpose why we had these work sessions planned, so we could each have input on what was going to be on that agenda, what topic we wanted to cover, and then we all brought our ideas to that. So that was one way that I thought we might be able to be more effective. And of course, this is, it's an open session, so like you are here tonight, you're in the audience, so you hear what questions are being asked, what topics we are considering, and you get a better understanding of what our thinking is and maybe get some idea before we might go on a decision down the road. So that was our agreement that we came up with to do that. And that was to help us navigate not able to actually sit down and talk with each other. It was a one opportunity that we could bring items that we wanted to discuss, and we could discuss them for as long as we wanted to. So that was a plus. So that's my take on it. So now I understand your take, your take. You understand mine, and hopefully, the audience understands where each of us are coming from.
I thought there was some good information to hear from. Repeatedly, diversity was mentioned, that we need a commission that's diverse. From, you know, districts is one way to do it. It might not be the best, but it is one way. That's why, you know, we're here listening. But to get encouragement from the whole cross-section of the city to serve, to be willing to serve as commissioners, backgrounds are essential in the knowledge to operate the city, too. You know, Gary with his engineering, and Lewis with his experience working for a large corporation, and my background, one area was ADA, that we all bring something unique to the commission, that we can come together and share. And all of us are expanding our horizon, too. But when we bring in new members into the commission, the background that they've had, their work experience, from whatever, trade, profession, it all adds to the improvement of the community. We all can learn, and that's our continuing process of learning to serve. I agree with Lewis on the work session, that it does open a door for us to share ideas and thoughts on various topics. It's kind of providing that extra extension of the commission that we don't have with the three, that we can sit down and now talk. And one thing we never want to do is, like Dean said, the lack of trust. Create a lack of trust in the public in your commission. We do represent you. That's why we want to have these sessions, a public forum, that we can be open before the public. And if you have questions, we've all put our emails out to the public and our phone numbers, so you can contact us. But, you know, really appreciate everyone coming and sharing tonight. And if you have other questions, please, you know, or comments, let us know.
Yeah, we would be glad to hear from you. And I hear this from people out in the community. But I think it's not only here on a local basis, but you find it at any level of government, whether it's county, state, federal government. There seems to be a disconnect somewhere between the people and the elected officials. And if, here at this level, if the public feels like they're not able to trust us, then myself, I'll speak for myself, as a commissioner, then I'm not doing a very good job. I need to make sure that I'm addressing issues that you bring to me and that I'm moving forward. And then I get back with you and get you an answer, you know, at some point in time, so you know that I've addressed that. You know, there's, you try to be as accountable and transparent as legally that you can. There are certain things that we are privy to that we can't share. We can't share with the public. It stays collectively within each one of us, and there are reasons why, and I won't go into those. So, but it's something that I continually try to work on, to be a friend as much as I can legally be without putting myself in jeopardy. And I work for the people that elected me. And that's it. That's it. That's my only job, and I take it seriously. And I will continue to do that. I appreciate the input that you brought here tonight. And I've always made myself available to people. I've never turned down a question, no matter what the question was or where it was asked, whether it's standing in line at Walmart to get checked out, or whether I'm at the car wash, or whether I'm watching a ballgame with grandkids. No matter where it is, I'll always take the time to answer your questions. And if I need to get back with you, I do that. I mean, that's just part of the duties that I've taken on. It's been a huge learning experience for me. I didn't have experience in the actual governmental setting of this position, but I've had a lot of experience working with Westar and AT&amp;T as far as how I saw that, how they operate, you know, what they did that was efficient, what wasn't. And I've tried to incorporate that as me sitting here on this city commission, so. But if they feel, if voters feel like we need to do more, then I need to step up my game, and I'm speaking for myself. So I appreciate the comments. Anything else?
You know me, I'm always happy to talk. I have had two very close friends come to me and say that they think going to five is a terrible idea, because they say we can't, we can't get five qualified people, which I think is absolute nonsense. I mean, we have, I don't know, 9,000 or 8,700 people, and probably, most of those are qualified to do the job. I think that, I think that more people don't run, I don't know how to say this exactly. I think there's some people that won't run because they don't want to be embarrassed. They don't want to run against Leonard, and he gets, you know, 5,000 votes, and they get 50. So I really think that if you increase the number of seats, you'll have more people step up that are willing to run. So I just don't think we're going to have a shortage of candidates. And as you said, we'd get more diversity, we'd get more expertise here at the head table, that I think would be very valuable. I just, you know, when I, I wrote a column for the newspaper about this, and I went to every city's, you know, website to see what, how many commissioners they had, and I could only find 10 in the whole state that had three commissioners. Everybody else had five or more. And I really think there's a reason for that. I just think it's more effective. I know Jim Kelly just said he thought three was an okay number, but having been on both, I much prefer five than three.
Any closing comments from you?
No. I've had, I commented that three was enough, it worked.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think, I think while we're here, we're getting information, and we had four share their comments, their concerns, their ideas, and I think this is a start, that we want to hear everyone's ideas, so when we make a decision, it will be the best for the community. That's all, that's all our concern is, that we do something that the community is going to benefit, and we're not going to go backwards or cause other problems. You know, we are taking it serious, so.
All right. Okay. I agree with your points. A couple of people that have commented also felt like three, you know, for the most part, has served us well up to now, and they would like to see it stay at three. So with that, you have our email addresses and phone numbers. If you don't, if you'd like to see any of us when this meeting adjourns, we'll be glad to give you our email addresses and our phone numbers, and you can contact us later in case you didn't want to actually get up and speak tonight, but you still have some points that you'd like to make or some questions about this tonight. So with that, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So, you know, I think, I think while we're here, we're getting information, and we had had four share their comments, their concerns, their ideas, and I think this is a start, that we want to hear everyone's ideas, so when we make a decision, it will be the best for the community. That's all, that's all our concern is, that we do something that the community is going to benefit, and we're not going to go backwards or cause other problems. You know, we are taking it serious, so...
All right. Okay, I agree with your points. A couple people that have commented also felt like three, you know, for the most part, has served us well up to now, and they would like to see it stay at three. So with that, you have our email addresses and phone numbers. If you don't, if you'd like to see any of us when this meeting adjourns, we'll be glad to give you our email addresses and our phone numbers, and you can contact us later in case you didn't want to actually get up and speak tonight. But you still have some points that you'd like to make or some questions about this tonight. So with that, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion adjourned. Thank you for all attending tonight.